...Ku liyan di pu yin ko kusenet ke isakew, rudgegata udupe yang ku wai pagon in Ponpe, nan ku liya kupur kusanti kapaiwut. Ranwut niyare, October iisakeu, paran ka ono riak u triisaklimaw. Oranwut, uya ran kapaisak paiwun, uya kupur kusantuwun. Taden kagan kadlamu tayl, tayban katian an lulu, u iban paki taran one poranetkar, kak u liyan taytio, luluon rudgegata, summatay uya kupurun ranwut.
...Tayk katian an lulu, ay iban patu wensakar ran chansam. Yetki, savnaa fini ko kusal keseteu maing tamarko dapa lop. Ewene ban ku purar, me chembwet pejankas tuulana na atu wot buko. Mete hiir kadin ko sunayantit, chembwet biyan weinkoong. Ipege hiir an ketsi nan moul, ukaalwa atu olwiyala balam, sangin chap olaum chaktani onupe ko tu namang. Yeimet mey patu wensakar bi pati ikuramu, u ku puran atro un yidit, sijit prai tami.
Kalangan ntsenet torko, melel one poranetkar, taykakek kadlan nasummatay uya kupur, u iban ponase chiefler.
Senator Axel Abraham.
Amine.
Senator Hugh Quavis Junior. Senator Isaac Hartiew. Senator Ricky Carl.
Amine.
Senator Sency Edgar.
Mine.
Senator Wilfred H. Edmund. Senator Bill E. Edwards.
Dzumajee.
Senator Stevie G. Edwin. Senator Petcherigo L. Iron.
Amine.
Senator Aurelio P. Joat. Senator Petchel La Torre.
Akumadzma.
Senator Benny L. Labell.
Amine.
Senator Edgar W. Ligannet. Senator Tendy Testworldwi.
Amine.
Senator Benjamin H. Ludwig.
Dzumajee, amine.
Senator Magari Miguel. Senator Sheldon Chienet.
Yet, amine.
Senator Nolbert A. Perez. Senator Dionisio E. Simon.
Aye.
Senator Mitro Ay Simena.
Amine.
Senator Francisco Simram.
Amine.
Nine Speaker.
Aye.
Four Mr. Speaker.
Chansal muda sabalungan ku koromo, taykak kadlan nasummatay uya kupur, mowek madeng prey benga ku liyan taytio u ya summatay sakaratan kap. Melel sakaran misiko kabeng lap, pangupuran idap. Sakaran keiponi, o wala pangupuran. Rakshoko, paula pangupranisoko, wauki sabulma, legen ko na na lengko na geniyeko. Paul toro, labalapke itpalian tiap, momocho government, national, state or local. Wauki Kabnan Ponpe, Honorable Joseph Karyaw Kabnak. Honorable Movik. Wauki sombo, sombo bungla balam, Honorable Nelson Joseph, u yang amusong kopungan Koros. Wasakset Edngolwawo, Vice Speaker, Honorable Maker, Floor Leader, Honorable Abram, Honorable Senator Kan Koros, Langlang Samuro, Oleyso, Sariso, Sumasakan, Ollanglang Kasombalen, Wen Ponpe, Koros Nan Kalero Wot, Men Ponpe Koros Nan Chamber Wot, Nan Kahlaal Mastigan Kahlaal. Reket, okta leo benan uya kupurun ranwut. Taden kagan kadlamu tayl, ay iban ponase summatay Floor Leader, Abram, an kakal waiden an uya kupurun. Kalangan main Mr. Speaker. Uli ban yang pato ha, ijuwal sakaratan, kapung keiponi, o wau. Engkat pati yang lapu lapu makam jiang kiyeru, sansal nan wew. Wasakset ijuwal wangdun komi, wangdi Vice Speaker, wangdu melel kempa kapaih Honorable Senatorko. Ibil jongolin wawo, rayganme, pati yang jalan, mejengra wut nan kaleri. U i, pati yang ramawun, kapung payawon, men Ponpe Koros, melel rayganme, iyang jalan, uya lamalam wut nan, men kapesiakan. Speaker, n wau, i, imen uya takama gutu, peki, mot kesempal wojengka kataro pew, General and Ran Kriisakriaw.
Rayamen.
Chansal mo, kawaiden Floor Leader, Koros momocho komo gutu, masan iay. Uong masan isho, pung komo gutu apoi tar, mya masan aban general. Komi Senator Ned.
Kalangan komi speaker. Komoni iban pato ha, akam ku purapu, in patoan tiyangki, i tungal sakar misigilang, kapeng o wawa, pan ku puran anilap. Pati yang sabulma mi, masan, nan wau, me patoyan nilang. Nan wasan uya lamalam, i tungal sakaran wala pan ku puramui. Wangki Vice Speaker, Floor Leader, i tungal sakaran wau, men patoan filiki Honorable Senators Koros. Wangki rayganme, pati yang uya lamalam, imen mejengkapun ranwut nan kaleri, o pepeyan men kapesiakan. Puran ma mangi, pat patoan, uya lamalam, imen welya paraygan nan pininko kusenet ke isakeu. My name is Mr. Speaker, toklab, mau, and General Clerk. Imen patoan pakita, sabulma mi pininko kusenet ke isakeu, o patoan uya takama gutu, taylen rutungti masan pew, sabulman kita, General me sansaler.
Chancellor, komo gutu Senator Ned, Koros momocho komo gutu masan iay. Uong masan isho, komo gutu paitar, tay rutungti, or sabulman kita, summatay General and Ran Kriisakriaw. Masulaa, ay iban pluobonase Floor Leader. Speaker, ijuwal seren waw saban. Imen, asomoksit, liang seruk pramalu, peki taylen suspend order of business, suruk diapoli, 60 walun nan kalander. Chansal komo gutu mye, taden katian 60 walu, mye karyamen ban komo gutu.
Rayamen.
Taykut katia bon 60 walu, ansoon kat kilong komutan kusenetkan, horus solutionkan. Ma Koros sabulman kiyer an sumaw, dayketlamu, iban pluobonase Floor Leader.
Privilege motion, Mr. Speaker.
Komi ku pura floor, komi Senator Ned, state sabulma point of privilege.
Kalangan komi, i tungal sakaran wala pan patoto pa angku pura, pat patoto pa angku puramay. Imen n wau, patoan pata delegation in Madelineum. Pati yang Honorable Senators Koros. Oh, peki, taylen sabulmanki e wanso. And moment of silence, my Mr. Speaker. Ke karabriaw. Ke yu, lugen ku puran kaono, tokoyer, amen Senator werey, sang Madelineum, ye, former Senator Nathan Philip Temarakap. Ho kriaw and karaben moment of silence, my delegation Madelineum, pat peki. Taylen bil sabulman kita, e wansoan ku purkamelilei, wauki lugen ku puran kaono, me bil sansale, ngerey amen, dian imalap mau, ye waraken, Putis Petrus, me uya Chief of Staff, ongke penakai, eh, me mare sareko Petrus. Er nan moment of silence wet, my Mr. Speaker, imen taylen sabulmanki an sumaw, dan ku purkamelilei, oniwa, men patoan peki, eh, one paran Floor Leader, Senator, eh, Atson Abraham, and kama wayang ktrail luluon, kalangan mau ku pura par, ong peni name sosopai, tapalina isokset. Yeimet, my Mr. Speaker.
Kalangan chansal nik kawaiden Senator Ned, taden kongmalti lebnaancho, taden kak wauki, kabin sale talan, irailko, me kasaladar. Melel former Senator Philip O. Miss Petrus. An paki ta taden kongmalti lebnaancho, nanella lebnaancho. Kalangan Speaker, ijuwal seren waw saban kumalkasin ku pura. I, imen plu, sakar ku purakan, peki taylen suspend order of business, suruk dipan order of today, u apoli standing committee report. Chancellor, komo gutu mye. Weyri udupan komo gutu, mye iban paki ta, taylen katian pan order of today, ye standing committee report, iban ponase chiefler.
Standlingamti reports, number reyapki, one ikas silu, lai riisaklimaw, mapet. Governor Communication, number silubigin, nekafial, lai riisaklimaw, sang salmingamti panan.
Taden kak katian an masan aban report, ay iban ponase Chairman Karan.
Kalangan, my Mr. Speaker, inkaakpada samu kamidi moni. Kom ku pura pu ijuwal sakaran kapeng keiponi wawan, pati yang sabulma an patoyan nilang. I tungal wala pan ku puramui, wangdu melel Vice Speaker, Floor Leader, i tungal wautororong, isona lay mu, Chairman Etkar, Nasa Puafik, Senator Edwin, Ana Basoges, Chairman Adwi. U i tungal waw, ban puran, riayakam paka bayan Honorable Senator Kan Koros. My Mr. Speaker, n wau, kara kerak, ibada samu kamidi monio, komo gutu molwot, taylen kak uya ku purki, standing committee report, number reyapku one ikas silu, lebnyari isaklimaw.
Rayamen, rayamen.
Chancellor, komo gutu Chairman Koros momocho komo gutu masan iay. Uong masan isho, pung komo gutu apoi tar, tay ban katian an masan aban report. Komi Chairman Karan.
Kalangan, my Mr. Speaker, n wau, kara kerak, men sekerak ku puramui, ku purakan Koros. Report pan, temasan pan standing committee report, reyapku one ikas silu, lebnyari isaklimaw, and kapantalar ong, samatay session kusanti, me ban mye lakap.
Chairman, Chancellor, kawaiden Chairman, Koros momocho komo gutu masan iay.
Aye.
Uong masan isho, komo gutu paitar, ros standing committee report, number reyapku one ikas silu, lebnyari isaklimaw, kapantalar ong lakap. Mye the report chief.
Standlingamti reports, number reyapki, one ikas five, lai riisaklimaw, mapet. Promotions concerning the increased use of fusion gas, sang salmingamti environment and climate relations.
Kalangan, taden iku kak katian an masan aban report, ay iban ponasima Chairman, and education, Senator Sim. I'm sorry, Chairman and environment and climate relations, Chairman Artu.
Kalangan ku prome, Mr. Speaker. I, ijuwal sakaratan, kapung pa angku puran anilap, melel pati yang sabulma sakaratan, wau metiangan nilang, melel wangdun komi, nan molwot. Wangdi Vice Floro, yanga Honorable Member, kang Koros, o irailakanme, yang pati yang kachail men sang wot. Mr. Speaker, imen patu kan pata, sabulma kamidiin environment o climate relationo, sakaromolwot, taylen kak kataro pew, masan standing committee report, number reyapku one ikas payo, lebnyari, riisaklimaw, o sabulman kita.
Chancellor, kawaiden Chairman, Koros momocho komo gutu masan iay. Uong masan isho, komo gutu paitar, tay ban katian an masan aban ponasima Chairman Artu.
Kalangan ku prome, Mr. Speaker, kesapalai, ijuwal sakaratan, wau. Standing committee report wot, my Mr. Speaker, ime itanlong floor motioniu me tok, eh, tipsoonwaiiu me, kutayin, eh, me, me, kutayi bil uya tatoangki anso wot me, eh, uya, eh, chuwinwai, no bil uya chuwinwai te, piutain kas, imen sansal me, tipso wot, eh, ime sansal me, kapte long ong floor motion me, sansal me, eh, eh, sang iraila ramasakan me, il concern kiyer, eh, tipso wot, tipsoonwai te, chuwinwai me kutayi gun uya tatoangki anso wot o. Sansal me, kapte long er, sang, eh, Senator Simena, we, enkaku ya, eh, assignment ong, ong, ong molwot, melel, eh, assignment wot, e kopukaoyang er sabulma mi, eh, kamidiin environment o climate relations. Imen sansal me, eh, piutain kas, eh, mya tayl patoan weweki, Mr. Speaker, e pati yang er, songkai me, uyaer min kasamin in Ponpe, metuwe te plastic, o yanga ke, eh, jam pod. Sansal me jam pod, ansawot, myaer, eh, ngon recycling program, o plastik mudaik kotkotoke. Ah, eh, tipso piutain kas, bil yanger, pati yang, eh, tipso riawot o uya, eh, tipsoke me bil yanger kasaminewin Ponpe, melel, eh, sansal wasakan, nansetakan, numanororkan, repati yang er, eh, yang, eh, jam pod o plastik. Eh, kangon korongorongke uyaui, Mr. Speaker, o sa, luketo, ya, eh, EBA, melel exongon EBA yanga ke Germanin, eh, podin EBA, o gich korong. O yeime, sakar kita me, yeime ime melel, eh, eh, tayl tatoangki te irail, eh, business kanwagun, kilongo to, tipso wot, lautlaar, o ainanan, eh, eh, wui, ramasakan bil uya tatoangki, weyagi, ainanan, eh, bil kama ngayala, uya ben, taygen ku piyata ngon, o melel kau na batak, sumtungal kana cekana. Eh, momon, uliyan kiyer, eh, momon karstino, chui, melel kau na batak. Ni korongorong ya uyaui, eh, EBA, eh, kawaidi yang, eh, kamiti me. Ni tipso wot ya gun biya tatoak, eh, irail sayk, tuulana grop ma, melel tipso wotan, eh, kaga te, eh, kak, eh, ekokaw, sabulma jalan, eh, environment. Sayk ni roprobiu me, katierakita, ime sansal asang re, rerail me, eh, unikal me patoan an, eh, piutain kas ma pan lautla, eh, kak, eh kak, yang contributing, eh, kawela sabulma jalan environment. O dame, eh, re rekaman, me, eh, damu kesempal awareness anka uyauiyang, melel kutaylakan mugin tatoangki, piutain kas. We, eh uya tipso me, eh, kama ngayang tatoak, nyanso wot ya bil kaper, eh, me chocho, me bulogilar, tipso wot, eh, weygi, uya ben, eh, precautionary me, eh, ramasotow, patoan ni uya ben, eh, tatoangki, eh, piutain kas. Ap, ap, melel ime sakar kita me, eh, uyaer tipsoon tatoak, kesempal ong kaya imin Ponpe. O bil, nan kangon korongorong sa bil luketo, ya, eh, ya, public safety. Melel director o, gich, o gich bil korong, o, i, i bil songon momocho meri bil kasilaita me, kuneang, eh, public awareness an, an tatoangki weygi. Uya ben tatoangki kas, anu tan, an tokalang dame pan, an, an, an uya. Eh, eh, mia kaper pan me, eh, me bulubulka kak ut tatoangki piutain kas, ong songtikan, me bak, me kak bil kaperong, eh, general public. Metuwe te, eh, mia kaysin, eh, para kap, me serika chap tamwatongki piutain kas, o, o uyaan, eh, anapi, me kaga chap kaperong, ong wey pagon. O rebilinanan, eh, rebilianaan uchung EBA ong mapet, eh, public awareness ong, ong, eh, ong piutain kas. Mr. Speaker, sa bil korong, korongorong yang, kaliu me apa apali, ya, eh, bil yan piutain kas. Melel Elbi kas, gich luketo, eh, Mr. Awli, eh, Ryan Awli. Ime, ime pati yang korongorong, o kasilaita me, kasakan mugin bagator to, o kutayil tatoangki, eh, giswoksang, eh, kas miraken, eh, tatoangki, eh, nanare business me Elbi kas. Eh, re tuulaw, o sakar kita me, sin piutain kas me, gun patoto, eh, socha, mia safety fogiugun pati yang, me ong irail, ong merakun uya tatoangki kan. Merakatanki, eh, CRV, the counter sink release pressurize level, eh, sin kaska socha songko, kareta ma rabang kara kara la, rakaka chap tos. O, eh, niyarpuri sakar kita me, niyansema kutayl, eh, dispose, eh, eh, piutain kaska, taylen wewot me, woksang jam pod o plastik weygi, u tanagun mia luon kas loderi, yaseme, ramas kaki siis, yaseme bil worry la bangka cebena kak tos o. Ime ban kak bil contributing, dilutaakan, yaseme kara kara la bangka cebena, eh, 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 kak, eh kak tos o, kalilwa tawasakan. Eh, sansal me, eh, iraisomotkan, eh, bil kamelele me, irail, mege bil uya tatoangki, abekat nansapo, eh, 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 eh. Damerak, damerak bil kesempalki, awarenessan bil uyaui. Melel, eh, government entity, EBA, eh, pati yang school kan, ran kak. Eh melal eh government entity EBA eh pati yang school kan renkak renkakuyawerness public awareness ong uyaben tatoanki pue. Eh sansalme mia luketo eh business business eh entity kan eh kasalita me eh socha irail irail kali ong eh uyapublic awareness ong aramas. Gicharail nejki o re 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 men kabukawo ki government menbukawo ki eh uyaben atai bang kawewe yang aramas. O ngarail businesska eh resudan menkawewe yang aramas eh precautionary in ya ya biu ten kas porata bilkasabungela. Sansalme in place eh rebilkosa me socha policy eh socha regulation me medtoka me bit eh monarpan nejki la tipso kataran kak bilkawewe yang aramas. Mal tatoanki akmalon bilweweki me tipso wot eh tam bilkaper yang aramas. Eh imre imre bil nan report bil sansalme renmin kabukawo ki eh melal EBA o government ren renjiyanki o initiate public awareness in eh uyabe. Eh sansalme rebilyang uchungme eh me melalme eh biluyayer eh min kasamin o rebilyang uchung EBA ensong rob eh uyaben atai bang recycle eh 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 toon kasaka magin solat tatoak. Pueki sansalme uyabo utan bananana eh uyawi ma o pueki woksang jam port. Pueki nyansama tajil solat tajil solat tatoanki ap luon kas manimu melal mia tajibang eh patonpana wasayu eh biluyaw eh bilkaper yang er eh aramas. Eh ime eh recommendation na mia mister speaker at the meantime eh tajil enkak enkak EBA enkak eh initiate public awareness ong melal kutai aramasakan magin aleeta eh biu ten kas. Pueki sansalme tipso kisombal tipso kamangaya ap ansowot ya ibang kaber eh ibang kaber yang kutai mia tajibang uyatatoanki o eh sansalme eh kutai bilogo kilar songkate. Sansalme mia rekotme eh sansalme kutai bilogo kilar eh uyaben tatoanki tipso wot. O eh policy kan me EBA ban song 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 ra EBA ban song rob en takma ong eh uyaben tatoanki eh biu ten kas. Eh ime chini oralap eh mister speaker mia kakuliandi eh sabulmung kamidin environment o sakargita.
Kalangan chairman artui, mia dre masanabeh komu pro leader.
Kalangan speaker itungal sakarang waw sa pal bang kupromi vice speaker o honorable members kan. Speaker men kayu pati yang itungal chairman o siyang ke kapung pueki kapasian report me sansal bang promail. Sansalme umlan report wot eh kaw kawitki ew kaskul tororong enkak sansal yang public. Enkak apali tor kabertan tipso wot mia sumakjel susuban tatoanki nipungi. Riayen kap pati yang kawawa mesang itungal chairman nan korongrong tipso wot ni irail ko arail uyata tipso wot meson we safe. Riya pueki atail susunon wangin uyaben tatoak wot ya kawitriyam sansal nan korongrong imen sansal nan masinabon. Enkak sansal yang irail menpombikan me renkata tok tatoanki tipso wot. Ew kawitok kajiji ki ni atail bang tatoanki tipso wot melal biu ten kas ah import kan andar laut sang wonsaisin eh mesin biu ten kas stoobu pueki. Mia sume ban lautla akarakarabang kak brodi o uyata kaber kak kabesobesang sin biu ten kas. Eh kesombal kutai yang tatoanki import mesaisiang eh biu ten kas karayaw speaker. Eh mia sume tipso wot ginjai bin tatoanki nengila ayew recommendation sansal nan korongrong. Enkak tokpesang jam porto we mia sume nengka miajup pressure dan jam porto enkak karayang ban kak karakarala obto. Mia sume ban tokpesang a SLR kaber. O nan kawit na mia jam port wot de toon port wot asutu bilon swadi yang sabulmatia il environment. Anioralab iwan mia kak batki yang itungal chairman kalangan speaker.
Kalangan pro leader senator karol the chairman.
Kalangan my mister speaker itungalwaw sa pal bang kupromiyo bang kupurakan koros. Imen pati yang kawitkan na mia pati yang itungal pro leader kapingke report ma mesansal sang itungal chairman artui. Eh kapingke yata man report imen kapatayang kawidi masukoneng utan kosanetan pokawong tatoak wot pokawo EBA. Pue ikamelame utan tatoak kisombal yumet kawit ef kaskul and uyawi yet suresansal. Palikan mapan pokawo kaskul wot o kawit na utan private sector magin apali ot tipso bukat suremayang pokawo ki. Me akodis ikamelaleme akoneng e pinent tatoak yu en mia ning tuwan kosaneti yowebang kosaneti e pelben tipso bukat. Eh eh piltuwata jam port kosanetin jam port o kosanetin plastic. Sansal magtai kamanala kosanetin resaga plastic ita EBA mesai kamaget. Amen kosanetanana bilkokawong met. Eh ye once more antakuyak sent tatoakin kami tumawon environment eh well than eh kasamin no safety me biu ten kas the container in biu ten kas uyayang er bonbe yomelal biltagan lukikan. Kamelaleme awareness mapan mia koneng an yanga ke kawitin kosanetin mapan kosanetin uyaben e pelbenen tipso bukat wasakis. Wen kak e peltuwata e pelbenen drum kang e pelbenen batteristosa o e pelbenen tipso kabarkan. Me kamaget ban e pelben EBA yo ew beneme mia swot me yanga ke wasakis kadoro lawasankiit ma apali sangan tipso bukat. Eh pati yang kawitkan koros kupurkan koros kapingke report na mia ikamelaleme alaltan report wot andar konsak tatoak kisombal wot. Kalangan my mister speaker.
Kalangan chairman karol kawait na mia. Kamui senator the chairman artui.
Eh kalangan speaker kapingkiyong eh senator abram senator karol katela ban eh kawewen eh floor motion the report. Mister chairman eh mister speaker komkubura eh. Eh man wala sujus kasalita me mia korongrong sa biluyayang abesam government o sa bilukai irail to eh mia information me sebagaran provide ap eh lalatong so wot socha information me me provided. Ah sa kaskasik me eh informationo mainanso kisaraban main kataro to. Melal information me bit pakatar longo toon eh melal kas me import importation in eh biu ten kas nan domdei. Gennanakasambwea enkak lisawo se eh EBA arban assess assess uyaben eh uyaben arban eh apali ong melal environment o yanga ke program recycling me irail song song eh ilplaner enkaku uyapen tuwata jam port o plastikan. Eh ime chimi minta kapata longa report. Kalangan eh.
Kalangan speaker. Chairman kamui senator simon.
Kalangan komu my mister speaker. Ah money ban batbata speaker ayman nuaw. Toki itungatshakar tarkipunwawon mainso wot enkak patrong sabulmung mesalaya. Itungalwawang kupromiyo ong vice speaker pro leader. Kangay kampakabai anaposedor koros. Bilmen esamowon kiman kompi kan koros kilit patrong itay man session and measure. Speaker komkuburupi ibilmen yang patuwan ay kungad. Batmatuong tatoak kisombal wot. Ning tuwan ay patuwan. Watwata reporting kamidin itapungkitongu tatoakna kabitu yimen patuwan ong credit kamidin pueki damar lalong o damer kata koprotunan molwot. Remi kisombalki speaker pueiro wot biu ten kas epitalta mori menpombi. The biu ten kas uyala kisong iyasin menpombi. Mia paniri mapan patuwan. O protot bilsong pesarila biu ten kas yowre panpatuwan ta. Pomen kakarakarla konetorail de sakarail monarpan konay monarpan kompen. Eh riya uyala kisong iyasin pombi. Eh ban inanan sanswot rompuralal nitupesarikana abe parapartung. Eh wasamik kisombalki my mister speaker nan report sansalme ansomak tajilin tatoanki eh biu teno nuk. Eh monmistoobukundap nan nan portu mimiyoto sin yanggal. Menpombi yopoaki mekot laluto kutai kutai me lukilik lukim me kutai patuwan uyaben tatoanki tipso bukat. Business kan fil o poaki la socha kabukawo ki me mia songun tipso meranane kabasa ong irail kosteburam pombi yang kabar. Ew met biu ten. Iroa sansal ira kisombal sang pro leader me nan korongrong ro kawit me tanah. Import menpatuota pon biu ten stoobka ita no klakala. Speaker ragwot karasapomaw mia komkubroya senator eh senator simram. What is senator simram? Eh aman victim and biu ten kas pueki so kabasa me bit yawon a import me kat tatoak pon biu ten stoob. Eh kisombalki ira riaw me kamdi patuwan recommend ira kayu. Epi enkak uyaa recycling. Korayaw ira me fit public relations. Imen trun en mia sang nan report wot o tatoakin kamdi me tam eh senator karol masan. Eh mia kosanet pue laluto ansowot ikamelaleme irailkan me patuwan to biu ten kas pombi. Ananabi kobrela empty biu ten kas portu kat kobrela sang pombi. Eh imen yang kongonge kamidin mister speaker reta wutu wasakset. Kamidin ananekot yonanew kak. Borong kak cho. Ya lukoyu ma ong e pelben irawo biu ten kas. Pue kamelaleme ira di biu ten kas pombi so wot eh panapolo menpombi bewela kisombalayriyas. Ap moyin ikamelaleme toongu kaboso ma wananawiyawi o makakirailkan magin patuwan to biu ten pombi. Pilananek kobrela sang pombi biu ten kas detoyakas. Eh irawo imen patki yang masanin ira kisombal wot mesong ragwot kalangan komus speaker.
Ma won senator simon senator edwin.
Lan chairman eh itungalwaw kapatabat ongan komu. Vice loroh honorable member kan o tajilkan me yang pati yang tajil men singranda. O mister speaker moyin ira kisombal yumet moyin eh bit irayaki. Moyin tam eh tajil ma masanian swot environmental impact health health impact o hazard me eh poratasang tatoanki eh biu ten kas. O mister speaker moyin. Ong irames senator simon kasalita moyin tajbanananan ekbesang biu ten kaso stoob. Sansalmaon yangsumak tajil patuwan aleeta stoobuka. Mia instruction bawo o kawit mensansal sang yow pro leadero pato ton eh stoobwot kayditanibil inteng ambil kilal. Wen bilsansal yang aramas kan me saisin importkan etabilgin sebelala wonsaisin burner na mia. Pueki eh ime kenaleeta kaso akin kakadha purti yang nan stoobo. Bilkarakarlan canistero yangsuma aramas tatoong. Eh mister speaker moyin dami moyin bil sutunok sansalmaon nan report wot moyin sansalmaon may kaswot bil. Mo aramas bilbant tatoanki nan wasamik koyit rapso treventilation ma eh bilbangaratap problem eh sansalme health issue ma aramas ban. Esingang kilong kaswot bil bilkinyata eh kapal kayong roson ma ong aramas manare eh. Ong biu ten canister na mia moyin iwasami iyang pakatakasombalki pueki melal utan eh moyin tembasion mapan tatoanki bankak. Tatoankila yow canister nan moyin madalen ran riaw de silu ma ita mer tatoanki nan eh ong kaluwita tungolkan de songtregan me rabang tatoanki. Moyin sabulmatia il kasaankiit mia bilsansal sang eh chairman in eh finance me. Biu ten kas canistero mo bilconsidered hazardous material yangsuma tajibang. Eh mia tajibang biltolokiila kitregan ah. Moyin eh espores the environmental to impact eh bahanapte to besang magitay sete bahanaisa ladyila wasakis. Eh moyin me bilkeyung kisombal sang koros moyin dami pro leader kasalita me utan okoneng de aramas manenkak. Morin usage in canister wot ra renkak an koborokta. O kawit me ibil patuwan kilang nan online me tajilde tolokiila eh kitin nan imkan nakitay lang kotorela pueki. Baysete patuwan eh masurikan banjukil toketa o kakadha bil. Katiglunga yang nan overail ya ki men kalitopa. Eh i iroet me ibilmen batki yang dami sansal moyin eh kotope napet moyin. Moyin legislation trun bankak en lal kataila o lalawasamakoneng an lal. Kalangan speaker.
Kalangan ma won senator edwin mia dre masanabeh standing kamidir report. Kamui senator hirance.
Eh kalangan speaker komkuburupu itungal sakarang kipuniwawon pati yang sakarang kipuniwawon mapatitar. Meril wanggin komu speaker vice floor kampakabai honorable senator scan koros. Irailkan mapati yang yalamalam nan mol bilitungalwawon songpewot unsek magatin peipeyan yalamalam in mesang kaburalwot. Mister speaker eh ibatuan yang kapingke kisombalki eh ira mapatpatu mo taylan sukset me bit biu ten kas. Speaker sansalme tipso wot mia kamawbe bilmia kaswot. Menpombi cho tokin patolan istowa o patonpan tipso wot. Socha tokin katan ki biu ten kas. Tarakin masani patowan lepin chuwin lepin kaites. Me weweki uyalar kisen matamata. Poma swot tipso wot arabang pralayra balebaleati chubeakan kamukamela chubeakan. Speaker dami patonan kisombalki. Totoak ma me kamiti kachin de patonan capiatar. Tajilde ititiyanga cheni kabertbe. Kapatayang kasamin tipso koros mapatonan jam port de canister me tuwata biu ten kas. Totoak wot en pilkak kubet tipso bukat koros. Pilkapatayang nyene besang in pitkan aluminium hot. Dami bilkesombalki speaker me bit aramas kan marududong fiono karen tokobesang. Eh isodono un uchung irawo speaker. Ananamoyin kawaiden sang EBA irail semelkan. Pue emenda uyakungkunkiyo saik neksang kanenge imetewadan tokobesang abappos. We, emenda wyo, kunkunkio, saikneksang, kanenge, imetewadan, tokobesang, abappos. Haru, i, kasumpaliki, iro wat, pati'apen, en kak, lol, onei. Yang umon, aramasamen, ya bangkak, to'tongu, po'otyu, ho'ka, kusayang, duwana, me patpatu delyo. Speaker, i, kasumpaliki, iro wat, kitail, kupuren komdi, ete, ititiyanga te, beauty. Songkan koros, me patolongo'to, patuwanan, chenpot, me pit, ang. To'tokwat, en bilkak, gebbe, we'ki, epan pit, kamakelkan, minimatai, piwat speaker. Ime men patkiyang, komdi, aikatunggi, to'toknotuk, patpatu mol, molwat rangwat, kalangan mister speaker.
Kalangan, senator Hirons, vietem, masanib, standing on the report. Come on, senator Ned.
Kalangan, komis speaker, kesa balit, tungal sakaran waw, ew, masan, visit, katchilip, and committee report met. Niwaw, men patuwan wiyata, kamakit, ra'ilan, tutungti, masan, o'sapulman kita.
Kalangan, eh, senator Ned, eh, Ivan, ponasakamakit me, meye. Amon, Ivan ponasakamakit, nituan, amayil kawit, ki'era, report kasilimet, okone, epolpen, meye. Aikamelaleme, manekupkupure, ayew, mo'ushin, morun met, en kak. Kattar, ropo'to, executive, po'ki, sansal, mi'irail, me bangkak, kailaka, to'tokpukat. Po'ki, ya, sutu kosenet met, aran, treptak, au kau nap, eh, kubuktakan kosenet, eh, ran kak, kawit, ki'edile, slajin. Ansowat, saikin, tokosenet, aran kak, kailaka, nituan, ruwaisan, executive, only toan, kawit, NEPA, o, Department of Public Safety, ra'el kawit, nan ropo't. Koros, mau'tung kamakitok, ra'ilan, tutungti, masanib, masaniyei.
Ey.
Uwong, masanisho, kamakit, po'ita, tra'tungti, er, masanib. Koros, mau'tung, ra'ilan, sabulman kita, standing on the report, ri'apkone, sak payu, debonya, ri'asak limaw, masaniyei.
Ey.
Uwong, masanisho, kamakit, po'ita, tra'sabulman kita, standing on the report, ri'apkone, sak payu, debonya, ri'asak limaw. Come on, senator Ned.
Kalangan, komis speaker. Imen patuwan, ta'da, sabulma, komdi, roson mawon, patuwan wiyata, kamakit, komel, kadun, kupure, o floor, eh, kitailan, maka, ka, itungal kamakitok, kitailan place, standing on the report, number ri'apkone, sak limaw. Ri'asak limaw, ri'apkone, sak wunau, ri'asak limaw.
Sansal mawon, kamakit, me, meye, ta'ilan place, standing on the report, number ri'apkone, sak limaw, debonya, ri'asak limaw, ban sabulmatay, standing on the report. Koros, mau'tung kamakitok, masaniyei.
Ey.
Uwong, masanisho, kamakit, po'ita.
Come on, senator Ned.
Speaker.
Kalangan, come on, speaker, men patuwan il, floor, ong floor leader.
Floor leader, come on. Kalangan speaker, exnor sakaran waw, sapa'al. Eh, komkupuray, Ivan, pati'ang, chairman in, elder, senator Ned, to, begi, ban kupurakan, jalan kak, place, standing on the report, number ri'apkone, sak wunau, debonya, ri'asak limaw. Kalangan, sansal mawon, kawit, floor, jalan, place, standing on the report, ri'apkone, sak wunau, debonya, ri'asak limaw, ban sabulmatay, standing on the report. Speaker, we'ki, utuban kamakit, kau mia'ir, aiman, begi, ta'jalan place, standing on the report, rya'um, mia'ir. Come on, floor leader. Kalangan, exnor sakaran waw, sapa'al, niwaw, i'sakaruk, purakan, o, begi, jalan suspend, order of business. O, chorogti, abali, number sak limaw, me, resolution calendar.
Kariamen.
Kamakit, me mia'ir, sang floor, koros, mau'tung, kamakitok, masaniyei.
Ey.
Uwong, masanisho, kamakit, po'ita, tra'torakian, pon, resolution calendar. Come on, floor leader.
Ivan, patuwan il, exnor, ansowong, chairman in finance, komkupurres speaker.
Floor here, ong chairman in finance, come on, senator Carl.
Kalangan, may mister speaker, exnor kabungong, exnor floor leader, we'ki, ban tongoleng, yang sumaw. Exnor waw, sapa'al, bangkupuram, yo, bangkupurakan koros, may mister speaker, niwaw, o, kara-karak. Imen kamakit, withdrawal, and, resolution number, obukie sak duaw, debonya, ri'asak limaw.
Kariamen.
Sansal mawon, kawit, me, meye, koros, mau'tung kamakitok, masaniyei.
Ey.
Uwong, masanisho, kamakit, po'ita, we'ki, kamakit, po'ita, ra, komutan resolutionet, patpatu, yor, bangkupurakan. Come on, senator Carl.
Kalangan, may mister speaker, exnor, waw, sapa'al, bangkupuram, yo, bangkupurakan koros, exnor kabung, we'ki, kupur mawon, and malwat, resolution wat, en kak, withdraw, we'ki, met, may mister speaker, niwaw, o, kara-karak, kamakit, malwat, jalan kak, place, resolution obukie sak duaw, debonya, ri'asak limaw, ban sabulmatay, resolution calendar, and rangwat.
Sansal mawon, kawit, me, meye, koros, mau'tung kamakitok, masaniyei.
Ey.
Uwong, masanisho, kamakit, po'ita. We'ki, ya, po'ita, aiman, begi, ta'jalan place, komutan resolution obukie sak duaw, debonya, ri'asak limaw, ban sabulmatay, resolution calendar, and rangwat. Ma koros, place here, Ivan, ponasak chief clerk.
Legislature Resolution Number, FPI, sak duaw, line, eh, sak limaw, proposal for resolution. Further amending legislature resolution number 111 that 25. To provide for legislative acceptance and approval of these grants for the state of Ponbe for adoption.
Kalangan, jalan kak, katianan, masanib, Ivan, ponasak floor leader. Kalangan speaker, imen, patuwan, sakar, purakan koros, waw, begi, jalan kak, kataro, po', legislature resolution number, obukie sak duaw, debonya, ri'asak limaw.
Kariamen.
Koros, mau'tung kamakitok, masaniyei.
Ey.
Uwong, masanisho, po'ki, kamakit, po'ita, tra'ban katianan, masanib, o, ma'kupuren, ponasama, entro tuseran, komutan resolution wat, senator Carl.
Kalangan, may mister speaker, exnor waw, sapa'al, bangkupuram, yo, bangkupurakan koros. Resolution, obukie sak duaw, debonya, ri'asak limaw, ban wuketala, sabulmatay, resolution. Me, sabulmatay kosenet, ruwaseyer. Resolution, ewan kak, meye, nanew, dien moni, me ban, ang, sawasakan koros. Meli sawasin moni, me ban, patoto, patian, to'tongkan, me, epol, nanew, dien moni. Eh, resolution wat, malwat, en kak, kamanata, oh, ang, wen moni, ew, me patu, patu, nuwantala. Sillo, polinen, rya'kit, demobuki, silisak wunau, 382,536. Me patoto, ban, special education program, ma'apali, Pacific Island entities, ewan kak, epol, ban, ban, kamarain. Aniaralab, iya'ta, ben resolution met, may mister speaker.
Kalangan, chairman, we'ki, kabesan, resolution, vietem, masanib. Come on, senator Carl, senator Ned.
Kalangan, komis speaker, exnor sakaran waw, sapa'al, niwaw, men patuwan wiyata, kamakit, jalan ritin, masanib, waw, kita, taku kariamen. Kariamen.
Masulahan, masanib, ban, ponasak kamakit, koros, mau'tung kamakitok, masaniyei.
Ey.
Uwong, masanisho, kamakit, po'ita, tra'tungti, er, masanib. Resolution, obukie sak duaw, debonya, ri'asak limaw, tra'ban katianan, usus, koros, mau'tung, komutan resolution obukie sak duaw, debonya, ri'asak limaw, kawatan, in lima, palimaun. En sansaleng wey, me sabulmatay, usus, me to'ak, komutan resolution obukie sak duaw, debonya, ri'asak limaw, usus, ri'asak ey, osutu, mawon. Rangwat, ra'ikamanalar, resolution, ta'komutan resolution obukie sak duaw, debonya, ri'asak limaw. Masulahan, resolution, ban, resolution calendar, Ivan, ponasak floor leader. Kalangan speaker, imen, sakaruk, puramaylu, begi, jalan kak, chorogti, ta'an, rochoru, number sak wunau.
Kariamen.
Sansal mawon, kamakit, ew, mia'ir, o, mia'utuk, tra'ikatian, pon, number sak wunau, rochoru. Speaker, floor leader. Kalangan, unipan, liw, sakaranan, ansowan, rochoru, may mister speaker. Komkupuray, we'inkak, kesa bali, exnor sakaran waw, ban, promi, wongki. Vice speaker, wongki, melil, kambukabai, honorable senatorkan, bil, tongoleng wawon, ra'ilkan, me pati'ang, jalan, mesing rangwat, nan, kalari, waw, sapa'al. Speaker, imen, kayu, kabungki, eh, ban, tiyangki, sama jalan, ma'masen, nan, iro choruru, ni'asowat, unipan, sakarki, exnor, iro choruru, imen, sakar misuk. Kayu, begi, melilay, en kak, gebbe, projailan. Ansow, choruru wat. Speaker, imen, wiyata, kamakit, onuaw, begi, ban, promi. Speaker, communication, number sak ke, debonya, ri'asak limaw, komian kak, asain, ngapropi, komdi. Romakak, jajakit, nan molwat, ropo'tyu, me ban, utan, stampi di, ruwungke, me, sansal, nan, communication wat. Speaker, ban, pat, koprela yang, begi, melilay, o, jalan kak, komian kak, abali, yang komdi, ayar, men, jalan masan, ayey, exnor, begbe, met, speaker.
Kariamen.
Ta'il, ma'abok, kamakit, mia'ir, o, kariamen, be, meye, imen, begi, ta'jalan, komal, debina'su. Ma'kupuray, patuwan, begi, ta'jalan, komal, debina'su.
Hello, I am Chancellor, the Premier of the House, we are here to meet you, the Speaker of the Communications, Secretary of the Ministry of Foreign and Foreign and the Chairman of the Committee on Appropriation. The Chancellor has met with the Council on Communication, we have met with the committee of appropriations, we have met with the committee of appropriations, and we have met with the committee of appropriations. And according to the committee of appropriations, we will declare the speakers of communication, Secretary of the Ministry of Foreign and Foreign and the Chairman of the Committee on Appropriation, will be here.
Yes.
We will declare the speakers of communication, Secretary of the Ministry of Foreign and Foreign and the Chairman of the Committee on Appropriation. Mr. Turoh, floor leader.
Speaker.
Senator Aldean.
I am Mr. Speaker, he said that the Council of the House, Mr. Speaker, we have met with the President, the environment of climate protection, we have a motion, and standing committee report number 115, the Secretary of the Ministry of Foreign and Foreign, we will make the executive, we will make awareness, and we will make it.
Make it.
Make it.
The Chancellor, we have met with the committee, we have met with the committee, we have heard, according to the Council, we have met with the committee, we will declare the speakers of communication, Secretary of the Ministry of Foreign and Foreign and the Chairman of the Committee on Appropriation.
Yes.
We will declare the speakers of communication, Secretary of the Ministry of Foreign and Foreign and the Chairman of the Committee on Appropriation. Mr. Speaker. Chairman Korn.
I am Mr. Speaker, this is what I said, I will say it. And the president will say it. This is what Turoh said, he said that he is a man, he is a man, he is a man who is a man. He is a man who is a man, he is a man who is a man. Mr. Speaker, he is a man who is a man, he is a man who is a man. 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 We have made the policy, we have made the policy. The Council has said that the fire and rescue division is in charge. He is a man who is a man, he is a man who is a man. 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 The Council has said that the police department is in charge. The Council has said that the police department is in charge. He is a man who is a man. 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 Mr. Speaker, we have met in office, and we have met in the meeting. 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 He said that he is a man, he is a man, he is a man. He said that 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 he is a man. We have met with the committee, we have met with the committee. Fire and Rescue, we have met with the fire and rescue division. He said that he is a man. He is a man who is a man. We have met in the meeting. He is a man who is a man. He is a man who is a man. I am Mr. Speaker, he said that he is a man. He said that he is a man. He said that he is a man.
We have met with the committee.
Make it.
According to the Council, we have met with the committee, we will declare the speakers of communication, Secretary of the Ministry of Foreign and Foreign and the Chairman of the Committee on Appropriation. We will declare the speakers of communication, we will declare the committee. Speaker, I am. I want to say that the Council wants to meet the five floors, and the senators will be here, and they will be here. The Council wants to talk about the final committee, the committee of appropriations, the committee of appropriations. We have met with the president, he said that the Council, the senator Korn, the incident we have met with the Council, the requirement for fire and rescue. The chairman said that he is a man who is a man. He said that he 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 is a man. The committee of appropriations, we will declare the executive department, we will declare the executive department. According to the Council, we have met with the committee, we will declare the speakers of communication, we will declare the speakers of communication. The regularization. Mr. Turoh.
Speaker, I am. I said that the Council, the Council of the House, Speaker, I said that Turoh is in charge of the BAMPIT project. I said that the Speaker, according to the list, is in charge of administration and TNI, he is in charge of project, he is in charge of project. We have made the policy. He is a man who is a man. He is a man who is a man. But he said that he is a man. But he said that he is a man. 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 The Speaker said that he is a man. He 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 said that he is a man.
Ah, me esutoka, kis koi, eh, kantutikilak, ma alukup patpatro ni bit, limanen limak, eh, kitab, eh, etak, patroyo mi bit, kit, epilita. Eh, bit bit bit, mimi tensipasera moy wendawat. Arri, ime imen, patawan tarawet pe, committee ankak patkiyang kupro, eh, ipadowan me, ananan mponpe me du. Ah, no pokat, eh, inenen tatoak laut weyi kaval miayer pagi pos, itok tak kaval, ipadobo wasa du du pos, tatoak laut mia. Song salabuk, kavalin pos uyah, apmo po congress bilabaliero, met pos kate, pro lesaps. Ay me ipadowan tai rawet weyi makak, nambar mon wet, ititan kabengki me committee tak, koskiyo. Speaker, sibana, ndu uyag motion you, ipadowan tato mon, mon chairman o trung committee. Eh, pat tatoangko, patpatro yer tan, pro ray, ay imen, men patawan, kalangan mister.
Kalangan, senator Simon, ituan kawit me mia kaidan komogit you mu. Eh, ri, ah, mia tre iratoror, kamui, senator.
Kalangan may, mister Speaker. Aidongal wa sabal bang kupurumu yo bang kupurakan koros. Ikabengki ren kupuramasan salang, komba kabai, senator Simon. Wey kamelele me malwet, unjak, kupur koros puna tuki, pradangkan maka manamanda, rof surre komogit. On kawit me bit, bit obukian kakapulsang, ele kawit o, main tatoagam project cup. Pradangkan me sansal, monu kamanamanda, implementation me sai uyawi. Tatoak me, kutei katkatlalaranwet, me yang aki executive order riaw. Executive order saroyaw, Luminari, Aisaklimao, executive order sarosilu, Luminari, Aisaklimao. Men kataman kupurakan, uyaben, sabunmatail pukoyang executive order riawet, magmogit nan tamae committee moni. Executive order riawet, intuan kabina, kamanata, kosanet, mesudo project you bang komogit. Lau kabinar wase ma ban komogit. Sansal manan executive riawet, esure share, kosanet, makosanet uyaben, paytatin project, morin moni ya kamanamanda. Me wey weyi, kaitkatkat nanirayrayo, me bilkasalongalar uyaben project, men yang ban tatoak, kosanet, kawit me pato nan executive order. Ariman kataman kupurakan, tatoak wet, padpadoyer nan committee moni yo. Apalbe kan mia, nyansumatan, on kawit ben, executive order me komogit, o palongalangata, tuon kosanet, me kawit, melil uyaben project, eh, bang kenapal. Yi, men baku bang kupurakan, kita koros en kadrop kita irawet. Weyi ma yeyi ban momon kosan timet, kosanet kamanamanda, wey implementation ankak komogit, amia kosan di toror, me wuxan dame, kosan di nan kosanet, intuan dame pato nan executive order riawet. Ay kamelale me, utan, kawitin kosanet, anso koros, ime ban tatoak. Yi transom, kawitin executive order bar komogit, o toula bon menen kosanet, magdaikatkat nan, anson emergency, sansal magdaesut katkat nan anson emergency. Arri, kom kupuramay, mister Speaker, imen, sagare, senator Simon, me tatoa pokat, committee ban nandi yang kamatangotong, mon malwet. On, karongrong sabal, on project pokat, dalenidargi, o sabal padoya, on madang koros, o onei koros, a committee ban abali yato. Pokaidan ida product silu wet, me executive order pokat kavantala, project cho'to me vital, kabil tonpe, lill projecten Alan Chaman, projecten al, Bolupotnan Colonia, projecten al, Dumpotnan Wainsokes, o projecten al, may ban surre sab, Aisek Saman nan weng kiti. Tatoa pokat, committee ankak, anaky nyansumaw. O ban nanti yang abali yato, mon, imusaglan sawamatail, desin kasumpal wet, kalangan may, mister Speaker.
Kalangan, chairman, senator Artu.
Kalangan, kesa palay, tumal sakratanwaw, eh, m, eh, mister speaker mawo pe, eh, eh, ay chairman kasalitaar, na bit project kan me, na mia nan wainsoke, imen sansal me, iman melil, eh, mia projecte magkamanaman Lara, eh, melil, eh, uyah, has adopted by, me, executive order me sansal, ay imen, imen, imen yang, uliantik delegation o, bil kasalitaar me, projecte bil kolkol dir, weyi, eh, executive order. Kalangan, mister Speaker.
Kalangan, senator Artu. Nansal me tuon chairman eh kasalitaar, na kaidan kamanamandahan moni on project, me uyah problem anso wet. Kakelaban, project kan, magtrail kamanataar moni, ime uyah problem anso wet. Kakelaban, project, magtrail kamanataar moni. Ikak patawan med, pongai me yang koyun, yang uray nan legislature wet. Nansal den nantiyan legislature wet, yi diyan legislature me koyun kamanata, moni koyun laut on project, and win tonpe, nantiyan tatoak wet. Ab saigintro project you komogit, weyi kawitin executive. Arri, and kagadexansal, wey kaidan i problemo, kamanamandahan kosanet, ta kamanamandahan moni on project kan, anso wet. Yi problem, kakelaban, the oke, oke kosanet, me, kamanamanda, wey, abali yata project pokat. And kagadexansal, me kaidan, kamanamandahan kosanet, me uyah problem. Kakelaban kosanet, kam executive tumalan ki, ime uyah problem anso wet. Magtrail bilbang kamanata, kosanet, pilaysak ranwet, esure bilbang komogit, lau attitude, and executive, ukitaksan dami anso wet. Kamui, vice Speaker.
Aidongal wa bang kupurumu yo on two floor, anarwet senators koros. Eh, aidongalangko, tapunga, senator Simon, kasalitaar al silipot. Speaker, tapungo kawitin chayen ko. And kak, nansal me, al tanapot, notice to proceed, mobilization rapilal air kiti, ab saigrapelit, project laut koi me, nachin. Inen kesumpal, alen nawalim talang, alen salabuk, and benpa, olapet. Mobilization alal, notice to proceed uyawiye, ab saig komogit. On project silipot me mia, o yang mimi nan kangan toktoken, wey kiti, al tabayume, tokon makak apaltan, eh, CID, kompak. Arri, speaker, mon committee finance kan, toula, na bilanabatimoni public wet yang, on bangin tatoak mia. Komang yang sawet, magitin kontrakin, irail ton tatoakin, bit yeklas, pasanaro uyawi songkans. Pasanapan paypay uyawi yata tok, teks pasanapan tatoak uyawi, arri, yato narwawyo paypay. Yamonon narwawyo paypay marisakuyata moni. Arri, imen, uyagit toktok yo on committee finance. Intangin project pokat yan uyawi, men kaidanca, kiti ni katkatwan, mekay mia tonpe, notice to proceed, mobilization paypay Lara, ab suru uyawi. Yatoan, inflation in project pokat, ban, kak konoti, keban kak, kantak alay, inaman project kan, kisain paypay, yektakunanto. Raman speaker, isu wet, imen kesumpal, komogit ban to tola, tonte wet, i gayo tryirkiya. Pa al mukalwat, abulokmenintan. Al mukalwaya, murchin si, songkans. Ma, amenamen, kitalban katla, katla nan songnu waila utka, kitumetelani, kampakin melil washarum, pasanmokmogit yala. Isu diotuksekin masani washan ananin narumet, ananin washanakme, katla nan wiko, kampakin gurun narumet, tamtam nen tamnala kalay, yang aki skool poska, imeni tak. Raman speaker, imeni kopunote, aidongal matamatau, last legislature kata, pasan nasan ban alakat, sudopala, this legislature, kaila mitan nantjanwet, tek me kati uyawi. Mu, familylele me, inafesuna, ananin legislature wet, nan tola, main implementation sudungaw, torasam irail nanak. Ayay tumal sakratanwet, man speaker, kalangan.
Senator Simon Mawor Rumien.
Kalangan speaker.
Mawor, mia tre, iratoror, kamui, floor leader.
Kalangan speaker, kom kupurai, ban yang share, ira magmasinto uyawi an sugsit, wey non kesumpal. Yi, maway tumal sakratanwaw, sabal. Imen kayu kabengki kawitkan koros me. Kawiter molwet wo, melil ira misan salang, senator Simon, ira kesumpal. Meli, lak kawewes, sutu banitara, ban kak, kabonoponyang, irail aramasakan magchail wolwalian, nan mol kesumpal wet.
Speaker, awon practice magchail uyay sugsit. Hey, chail nan nanti yang sabul majail tatoak, nyajail kama kamanata kosanet kan, uyawtahan sam majail. Araya, implementation in kosanet kan, me bit projectinal, e bilpoyek, weyi, uyaben tatoak me, kabina, bil sabul manki, mia kawawit, eh, executive order. Arri, ipazwan me, wey, nyajailban surre kak, ewgubenok pro chail. Nin tuon me ipazwanan, nyaiso me ipazwalong nan molwet. Uyaben tatoak, bagin katokebene, molwet, o executive, anso wet, egiswet. Iang kamelele me, nieban lut, chailankak, kisgubenok pro chailong, uyaben leadership, sangon momon, pey, pen tatoak pokat, chail ban sobai. Lau chail, pro chail ban kak, tokbene, tatoak, o apalbe aramasakan magchailpa, chail ababali, ay ban mawaw. Imen sagarmis, speaker, surre patpatwan me pokat weyi, i uo, palyo daramasimen. Au ni tuon, ni, eyipazwan, uyaben tatoak, me chail sobai sugsit. Lele iraiso, chailankak, amia palyo kak, chail kak, puligi di, chailankak, ketbene wo, abali tatoan kan, uyaben, angunkelak. Met magchailban pupus, samajail pali, executive ban pupus, aray tumal. Uyaben tatoak, pokat bang, paypayak, leturanwet. Kabrayang, aidongal sagarmisit, may mister speaker, honorable members, isurre patwan me pokat, weyi palyo, tamamen me uo. Min tuon, eyipazwan, eyang patyang walkesumpalwet, kalangan speaker. Mia tre, iran, kawit, abitata, ira misan sala, sansal, senator Simon. Sansal me kaidan komogit you mu, matular, ira abitata irawo, amia iratoror, likin bang sansaler. Speaker, kamui, vice speaker.
Sir. Hey.
Polisailankamaldisan ang uyakupur prong, sabal banal lakap klokisak.
Sabal banal lakap klokisak. Sansal maal komogit me mia, sang vice speaker, dal Kamaldi sanan uyakupur, o sabal banal lakap klokisak. Koros mau trung komogito masani yey.
Yay.
Uo masan isho, komogit paytar. Monadel ban katepang, men pakair gida me, senator abis, o irail kan me, pan sukusunggi, legislature glaw riaw, patrola. Uyah arail tumal kabeng, on tatoan kan me, chail ginsu wase, genirail. We, dugo toge, speaker o, senator kan koros, glaw riaw patrola, may yang padeng uyakonat, be bang uyawi, eh, glaw riaw. Ay imen pakairgi, kalangan, dal Kamaldi sanan uyakupur, o sabal banal lakap klokisak, salmadaw uyakupur.